Good evening. The time is now 6:30. I'd like to call the meeting of November 24th to order. We're going to change things up a little bit tonight. We are actually going to have a tour of the school prior to our regular meeting. And we're going to ask that Mrs. Hackett, the principal of the middle school, takes over from here. I think we can get up. We are in session.
Welcome to the middle school this evening. It is our pleasure to have you here. After a summer of quite a bit of renovation and work that we have done, it is now our opportunity to show it off for the school committee and also for our viewers at home who will be joining in at a later date. And so, we would like to begin in the media center, which is the area that really received the most attention. And over the summer, we were able to refurnish the whole room, complete with librarian circulation desk, tables, chairs, and perhaps best of all would be all of the 35 computers, workstations, and stations for teachers, which are in the back corner. Additionally, added to the computers here, we have updated quite a bit of our technology. And a few of them are on display for you to see this evening. First of all, down in the, to my right, in the back corner, is a smart board, which is a support device used for our Just Words program, which is a division of the Wilson Reading Program that we have been asked to pilot here in grade five. And at a later time during this meeting, Mr. Milner will be able to demonstrate the touch qualities of the board and how it works with children. In the center behind me is one of the two AV carts that we have purchased. They are complete with an LCD projector, a laptop computer, and any adaptive technology that we need. Teachers are able to sign them out, bring them to their classroom, or to another area of the building, for example, the auditorium, to use as support for class materials. In the far-left corner behind me, on my left, is a piece of technology affectionately known as WALL-E, after the movie character. And it is a flat-screen TV, complete with computer technology, DVD player, and currently one of our science DVDs is playing so that the school committee may see what capacity we have. Also in the back corner is one of the three cows that we have. They are wagons equipped with 15 laptop computers each that teachers sign out and may take to their classrooms for any type of hands-on, engaged activity for the students. The computers completely recharge, and they are wireless and Internet accessible. At the conclusion of this portion of the tour, certainly we do encourage the school committee and other members here to experiment with some of the programs that we have set up for you. And the first bank up here to my left, we have included Gizmo. It's an Internet-based program that has virtual science lab experiments included. Teachers may use them on the laptops, or they may come up here to the media center for the students to use these computers. In the far bank behind me is Study Island, available for people to experiment with this evening. It is an Internet-based program that will help children prepare for MCAS, to identify areas of strengths and weaknesses. And children are able to access both of those programs wherever Internet is available to them. It can be here, in a classroom, in the public library, or at home. And currently, we are in our second month of Study Island Challenge. Students who log on the most number of hours at each grade level, with at least a 70% accuracy rate, at the end of the month, they win a delivered lunch of their choice from P&amp;D Pizza. So tomorrow, four of our students will have a lunch of their choice delivered here. And totally, we have logged in October, November, just over 3,000 hours for our students. So, a new program for us that is just really catching on with the students this year. So, very nice to see that they are using it, and it can justify its purpose, and certainly its cost to the town, has proven that it was very worthwhile. Additionally, students have been using map testing. We do three windows a year. And throughout the library, you will see Lexile posters, and students know their Lexile range, and books on the shelves are color-coded with a dot. So students all know their Lexile score range, and they are able to select appropriate reading level materials by the colored dots that match the corresponding charts throughout the library. And that pretty much concludes our tour of the media center.
That was really interesting. Could we start our tour of the rest of the school? You're in charge, so you're the leader.
All right. I'll be taking you down this way to see our testing center. It is used for special ed, small group, and support personnel that students may need because of accommodations in their IT. All right, I'd like you to join us in here. This is our testing center. This was a classroom previously used as a literacy room, and we were able to do some reassigning of rooms. And so, this became a room strictly allocated for our testing center. So students who need small group testing, they need a scribe or a reader, will be sent from their classroom here, where there is staff in this room all day, to help them with any accommodations that they may need to be successful. If you look around the room, there is a considerable amount of positive reinforcement, not the least of which are the MCAS rubrics posted just behind me. Each morning, the special education staff reports here. They check the roster of students that are expected and the needs of each student, so that we have the adequate personnel here to service students as they arrive. So any student who needs a smaller setting finds it right here in this room. This is a typical eighth-grade classroom. This is an ELA classroom. This is one of the rooms, one of the 10 rooms, in which we completely replaced all of the furniture. So it was three years ago now, and you can see how nicely the children have taken care of them, and what a nice learning environment it has created for them. Additionally, we have asked teachers to post the Massachusetts Framework standards. So you will see those in this particular classroom. They are on the board directly in front of me. And we also have purchased new textbooks throughout all of the grades here. They are on display in the cabinet behind Mrs. Ennis. And each day, as the teachers are teaching, their agenda is posted, and the standards and the frameworks that they are addressing, so that there is constant accountability for students to know what is expected of them, the purpose of the lesson, what they should know and be able to do by the end of the quarter or the unit on that particular topic. That's it for the chat.
Mrs. Hackett, I noticed that we had problems with the intercom phone system before. I see new phones in here, so everything worked out so that completely compatible, all teachers' staff can get to each other for emergencies, et cetera.
The first year, we did have some wiring issues that have been completely resolved. And they do interface with our computer system. We do have 28 trunk lines coming into the building, so that on most days, anybody calling should not get a busy signal. It should just immediately click over to the next available line. And it affords us instant access when we need a student to either be sent to the office or we need to get a message to a student from a parent or from another teacher. This is a fifth-grade classroom, which we did also replace all of the furniture in fifth grade. They are a different style desk and chair setup, as younger children need a different type of capacity to pull their materials. This is one of the rooms where the students have used the laptops. And posted on the board, right behind Mr. Peterson and Mrs. Coonan, are the presentations that the students created on the laptops here, then presented on PowerPoint via WALL-E, and invited guests for, I believe Mr. Milner and I were the two invited guests. And we came to see their work and their presentation. You'll also notice in this room that there is a daily agenda posted. The Massachusetts Curriculum Framework standards are also posted, so that again, we are bringing children's attention back to what they should know and be able to do by the end of this chapter. You'll also notice around our building that many of the teachers have created word walls for their students. So instead of teaching spelling the old-fashioned way, we are doing current vocabulary and how it is actually practically used, and either in their math, this is a math and science room. So the words on their word wall have to do with math and science. And you can see that their room is very nicely decorated, a very nice learning environment. And this is just one of many rooms. They are all, the teachers have done a very, very nice job creating a positive learning environment for the students here. Everything is grade and age-appropriate, very colorful, conducive to learning, and I believe that many of them actually enjoy coming to school and learning here. So it's very nice for them, and we are very grateful for what we've been able to do for the students in kind of building up some of the programs that we've had here. This is a fifth-grade classroom where ELA and social studies are the topics taught. Behind me, as in many of the ELA classrooms, the teachers have their own classroom libraries established for students. Many of them are Lexiled as well. Again, you'll see the standards posted just over to my right. And again, fifth-grade classroom, a lot of decorations, a lot of displays, student work over on the board behind there. And again, very nice learning environment for 10-year-old students coming up from elementary school. I think for students coming from elementary school, they are a little bit apprehensive coming to the middle school. The children are older, it's a bigger school. But once they are here and settled in, it is a very nice learning environment for them. And it's like they've always been here after the first couple of weeks. This is our auditorium that was renovated three years ago, just in time for our production of The Riverdance. When we started to build a theater program here, it became clear to us in the very beginning that we also needed a theater. And this particular space was not at its best, shall we say? And so, the first thing we did was to replace the curtains. And then, we replaced all of the seating, the carpeting, and we added an electronic screen that can drop from the ceiling. We use it for class meetings, where we can rotate two classes at a time. And we also use it for theater, for music, for concerts, for chamber choir. And cheerleaders also practice on the stage here. Behind us is another example of the technology carts that we have. And teachers may take one of the carts out, and they may bring a class here. In some cases, they have used the technology to take student work that has been put into a PowerPoint display, and then broadcast it up here for the entire class to share in their work and congratulate each other on their accomplishments and their achievement on their project well done. This year, our play will be Guys and Dolls Jr., and we have over 200 students already involved. And the first week of December, we will have the contest to see which of our students will design the backdrop and the set for the production. And it is one of probably our biggest endeavors, and probably includes the most number of children in the school throughout the year. It runs from the end of October, and the production actually is the last weekend in March. In the previous years, each production, which we play three times, each production has been sold out. And so, as word spreads about the fun and the involvement, so does the number of students who are interested in being part of our theater program. We'd like to come into this room here. This is a grade six special education room. Three years ago, we did change the special education model that we use in the school, and so that all four grades have the opportunity for pull-out in ELA and math, and they also have another opportunity for small group in social studies and science. This is a typical room that really tucks not just the standards that the students are addressing, but it also deals with the character education, the positive reinforcement that takes place in this classroom. Just for example, in the cornerback there, each student's picture is posted, and each day, if we're doing homework or completing tasks, they are able to earn coins. And then, they can use their coins in the prize palace, which is in the corner right behind Mr. Peterson. And students know that each day, when they have done things that their teacher has expected, they will be rewarded, and that their rewards and education will pay off as well. Posted all around the room are just example after example of the positive reinforcement that takes place in this room. Standards are still posted for students here, as is the daily agenda and the do-now work. This is a sixth-grade regular education classroom. Again, if you scan the room, you will be able to see all of the positive reinforcement that takes place here. There is a considerable amount of student work on display, which also is a positive Dimension One type of activity. The classroom is nicely decorated. Included are the standards from the Massachusetts Frameworks. And also, the sixth grade is currently all reading the same novels, and so work throughout the theme of grade six is posted around this room as well. Students here have access to technology. They have, most every classroom has a TV in it outfitted with a computer tower and a CPU unit and a keyboard, so that any of the computer-driven programs can be displayed on the large-screen TVs as well. Most classrooms have, if they choose, have an overhead projector in the room, and they do also have some computer technology in classrooms. However, the majority of the computer technology is banked in, is around the building, computer labs, and the media center. Posted in this classroom, as well as in several of the others, are the Massachusetts Curriculum Framework standards. Each day, as teachers address them, they are highlighted in the classroom and in the daily agenda, so that again, stressing what students should know and be able to do. This is a math and science classroom. As you can see from the support materials around, it is an environment that the teacher has certainly used enrichment types of tools and support materials. And it is also one of the classrooms that uses the cows, which is computers on wagon, affectionately known as the cows. And when they go from place to place, students often ask if they're grazing when they go from room to room. So it is a very nice opportunity for students. If teachers sign out the wagon, they get 15 laptop computers. So pretty much, it's two students to a computer. And within this classroom, you will also see the focus on student work, which is displayed over near Mr. Hebbenberger in the quiet zone over there. Also, the standards are posted on the board right behind the stop sign there. Right is an example of a word wall, which we have encouraged our teachers to use with students. These words then become their spelling words for the week or for the month, instead of teaching spelling words in isolation as they did, for example, when I was in school. They are learning words that they actually know the practical application to. They learn the spelling, they learn the meaning, and they actually use it within the math and science lessons that they are taking at this time in this unit with this teacher. It is a room that we reclaimed. It had been a classroom at one point. It had also become a room that caught all types of castoffs that nobody else wanted. And it was painted lime green. So we decided to, first of all, get rid of the lime green, and we reclaimed it then to use as a conference room. It was carpeted, it has new blinds, it has air conditioning, and compliments of the Navy War College is our furniture. And this is where we have any parent meetings, any team meetings, any special education team evaluation meetings are held in this room. And we use the room just about every day for some type of official meeting or other. So it has certainly served its purpose well, and it has made us very proud. When we bring people into the building as our guests, this is the room that they see. So certainly a far cry from the lime green and all the cast-off cabinets and furniture that were in here previously. Thank you for being with us this evening. It was my pleasure to give you a tour of the middle school. Those of you who remember it from two years ago, or five or 10 years ago, certainly can make the comparison and can see the difference in things that have taken place over the last few years. We are very proud of our school and the learning that takes place here. We have a wonderful staff, and we really do have wonderful children. And it is our pleasure every day to greet them and for them to be a part of our learning community. If you have any questions, I would be happy to answer them after. And please feel free to peruse the library, to check out the Internet-based programs that we have loaded up on the computers for you. And my name is Mrs. Hackett, and it was my pleasure to be your tour guide.
First, I'd really like to thank Mrs. Hackett, Mr. Milner, for allowing us to see the changes that have taken place in the school. We should be extremely proud of your facility. It really has come a long way in the last two years. I think this media center is awesome. And I just think we're very, very lucky to have achieved what we have in the last couple of years in the school, and I look forward to the changes that are coming in the next two years. So thank you both very, very much for allowing us to do that. We really do appreciate it. Next on the agenda, we have Lynn Thornton and Amanda Ayers. They're going to be presenting us youth, it sounded like the two U's, didn't it? Youth Risk Behavior Survey. They're going to go through this with us, and who would like to take it away?
I'm Lynn Thornton, and I'm the Safe and Drug-Free Program Coordinator for Oxford Public Schools. And through the Safe and Drug-Free Grant, which is, we receive from the Department of Education, we receive grant money that allows us to purchase programming to help keep our schools safe and drug-free. What we decided to do last year with some of the grant money was to adapt the Massachusetts Youth Risk Behavior Survey and survey the Oxford Middle School. So we asked our consultant, Amanda Ayers, who was with AKA Consulting, to customize the survey based on some concerns and questions we had for our district. And Amanda's going to talk to you about the survey.
PowerPoint presentation, which I will go through, please feel free at any point in time to stop me. Mr. Boss and Lynn and Catherine all received, and we had already did this with them, and they've received an executive summary, which is the full report with all the frequency tables for every question that was surveyed. We won't put you through that this evening. We're going to give a somewhat brief overview of the survey, and again, please feel free to ask questions about the process. So I'm going to... So, what is the Youth Risk Behavior Survey? The survey focus for Oxford Middle School students was on tobacco use, alcohol and illegal drug use, and behaviors leading to intentional and unintentional injuries. Those, we went back and forth, we asked, I know Lynn asked several teachers throughout the school if they had individual concerns. We really worked quite hard on some of the questions to try to get at some of the concerns that different people within the school thought might be an issue or wanted to have some more information about. So we really did customize the survey and adapt it to your school. On June 9th, we implemented the survey. Parental consent had to be given for students to participate in the survey. The survey was anonymous and confidential for all students, so it wasn't coded in any way for us to be able to tell who was, whose answer sheet we had. All of the people who administered the survey had guidelines so that the survey was implemented, the implementation was standardized. So every student taking the survey was read the same instructions, given the same procedures for completing the survey. And 207 students in Oxford Middle School were surveyed. Key findings. These are the things that were very positive that came out of the survey, and as you'll see as we go forward, we really like to highlight, there's a lot of benefit to highlighting the positive outcomes of the survey. It says a lot about the positive things going on in your school and in your community. So on a positive note, 96.9% of students surveyed had not smoked cigarettes in the past 30 days. Huge success, very successful. 76.6% never had a drink of alcohol other than a few sips. Students were asked, when completing that question, not to include sips of alcohol that might be consumed for religious purposes, such as taking communion, or for a certain ceremony that might be religious-focused. They were asked to not include that when answering that question. 93% of students reported never having used marijuana in their life. Again, a wonderful statistic. And finally, 75% of students reporting that they would help another student who was being bullied. We all know, not just here, as a nation, bullying is something that's come into highlight, is being talked about in all grades, preschool through high school, and even at the college level. So that was something that we looked at on this survey, and that's a great statistic that shows that your students are empathetic and caring of one another. Some of the things that show some potential challenges for the school. 28.6% of students reported having ridden in a car by someone who had been drinking alcohol, while 24% reported being unsure of whether they had ridden in a car with someone who had been drinking alcohol. Now, the students at the middle school level aren't driving yet, and we didn't ask follow-up questions about this, about whether that was a sibling, was that, who was that person that could have been driving? But that was 28.6% of students that reported that. 77% of students reporting having witnessed or been aware of a student who was being bullied or harassed. That being a pretty high number. Well, we have to look at this in conjunction with the 75% of students who said they would help somebody who they felt was being bullied or harassed. But again, a high percentage of students saying that they've witnessed something of that nature. And 47.8% of students reported being verbally threatened by another student at school. And 47.8% of students reported being verbally threatened by another student at school. That's a pretty high percentage, almost 50%, but again, something that really requires additional information. To start with, how are the students defining verbally, being verbally threatened? What do they consider being verbally threatened? So that's something that would really just raise the issue to know that it's something that needs to be looked into further. This table, which might be hard for you to see, so I'm going to read some of it out loud so you can know what I did with this table. On the left-hand side in the orange column is the indicator. So that's different issues in the survey that I teased out that were able to be compared across Massachusetts as a whole, Oxford Middle School in the middle in the purple, and the Healthy People 2010 objective. For those of you who aren't familiar, Healthy People 2010 are objectives set out by the Centers for Disease Control for the nation of where they'd like to see students in this, in this particular instance, middle school students, as a target for where they'd like to see students in different health initiatives. So a certain percentage of students that they'd like to see not smoking, or a certain percentage they'd like to see using their seatbelt. So in those instances where it was able for me to compare across the board, I teased out different aspects of the survey that was completed here that was able to show you some comparison data for where you stood. So for the top line, the indicator is tobacco use. So they're looking at the percentage of students who have never tried cigarette smoking. That's the indicator. Now, for the statewide 2007 Massachusetts Youth Health Survey, there were 9% of 6th grade students reported that they had never, who had ever tried cigarette smoking, 14% of 7th grade, and 23% of 8th graders. And Oxford Middle School came in at 14%. So right there in the middle with the 7th grade reporting statewide. And then the target for Healthy People 2010, where they'd like to see this get, is at 21% is the target. So the reduction in tobacco use by students in grades 9 through 12. So that's looking at a few years down the road for these students where you're surveying at a younger grade level, but the objective for where they'd like to see them get. In the middle is percentage of students who smoked a cigarette before the age of 13. A lot of the indicators for later on alcohol and other drug use are indicators of things that children have done before the age of 18. So smoking before the age of 13 is an indicator for additional things that may happen down the road for those students who have done that. So for Oxford Middle School in the purple, it's 4.3%. With 14 as the target, they're trying to increase the age. They don't want, they want that age of anyone trying something under the age of 13 to be zero. They want it to increase to the age of 14. So you have a low percentage here of students reporting that they've tried smoking a cigarette before the age of 13, so that's good. On the bottom, they're looking at cigarettes, cigarrillos, which are small flavored cigarettes, which have taken, are very popular in some areas of the state. Little cigars in the past previous 30 days is the indicator. And again, for Oxford Middle School in the purple, it's 2.1%. And the state rate was 3%. So you're below the state rate with that particular indicator. This is alcohol and other drug indicators, excuse me. So on the top, you're looking at percentage of students who have never tried marijuana, who have ever tried marijuana, excuse me. So the state rate is 8%, and you came in at 6.8%. So below the state rate who have ever tried. And the, for the Healthy People 2010 objective, they're looking at it being 0.7%. So they want to really lower that number. But you're below the state average, so that's definitely positive. In the middle is percentage of students who have used inhalants one or more times during their life. So inhalants comes in as anything that they've inhaled with the intention of trying to get buzzed or get a high sensation. And the state rate is 5%. You came in as students reporting at 10.4%. So that's an area where you'd want to look into, what are students considering inhalants? What are people, what types of things are they using as inhalants? It runs the range from cleaning solvents to rubber cement. It runs the range. So it's really something to just know as an indicator, something that you need to investigate further, what are students considering inhalants and what might this student population be using in that category. On the bottom, we have percentage of students who've reported taking prescription drugs to get high. Prescription drugs is a really big issue right now everywhere. It's not just Oxford, it's not just Massachusetts, it's really a national issue. And for the state, they're looking at 6% students reporting that they've done that, and you came in at 4.7%. So below the average. And Healthy People 2010, I think that was something that they hadn't even thought of when they were starting to do their indicators for 2010. So I didn't have that. This is looking at violence-related behaviors. So we have two indicators here that I've chosen to look at. The indicator here is the percentage of students who had been in a physical fight one or more times in the previous 12 months. For the Massachusetts Youth Health Survey, it wasn't that they had been in a fight. Their question kind of was, we're a little bit different, but I put the indicator up there anyway. Their question asked, who have you initiated a fight? So for the statewide survey, it was 13% of students who said, yes, I've initiated a fight in the past 12 months. For Oxford Middle School, it was, have you been in a physical fight? But 38.2% of students that were surveyed reported that they had been in a physical fight. The Healthy People 2010 objective is 32%. So again, looking at what type of physical fighting. Does this mean a push? Does this mean a shove? Does this mean punches were actually thrown? It really leads you just to know that you need to get additional further information to clarify that statistic. In the middle, we have percentage of students who carried a weapon. Youth Health Survey, that wasn't available. For Oxford Middle School, 28.6% of students indicated that they had carried a weapon, but this question did not say whether it was on school property or not. It was just a blanket question, have you ever carried a weapon? So that doesn't necessarily mean that they carried a weapon on school property, and that doesn't say what type of weapon. So they could have a club and consider that their weapon, or it could be a knife. So you don't really know what it is that they're considering the weapon, and it does, did not distinguish that it was on school property, so that's important to know. But that is pretty well above the Healthy People 2010 objective of 4.9%. They're looking at, trying to get a much lower number of students to reduce weapon carrying. On the bottom, we have suicidal behaviors, which is looking at the percentage of students who attempted suicide one or more times in the past 12 months. For the state health survey, it was 6% of students reported that. For Oxford Middle School, it was 4.7% of students. And obviously, the Healthy People 2010 objective is looking at it being 1% of students who reported that. In the field of prevention, really what they like, we look at holistically this type of data to look at risk and protective factors. A risk factor being something that might lead a student or student population, make them more likely to engage in risky behaviors, and a protective factor, something that would help them, prevent them from engaging in risky behaviors. So that's just something that I like to highlight when looking at the data, so that you can see a lot of those positive statistics that we, I highlighted first are really protective factors. So that gets into social norms, which I'll talk about in a minute for your school. But in teasing out some of the risk factors for the school, 18.2% of students had their first drink of alcohol before the age of 13, which I had mentioned before, is a risk factor for leading to other substance abuse possibilities, that early age onset, and the high percentage of students reporting having been in a physical fight. For protective factors, you have more than half of the students reporting that they had someone to talk to them, that someone had talked to them about the health consequences of marijuana or other illegal substance use, which is fantastic. And 53.9% of students report being involved in civic activities, which is fantastic, a really big, large protective factor, with 58.8, almost 59%, being in social activities one or more days per week. So we all know that the more students are involved, civic and social activities, athletics, the less likely they are to engage in risky behaviors, partly because they don't have the time to do that, they're engaged in these other things, but it also serves as a protective factor for them from engaging in risky behaviors. So looking at future areas of prevention focus for Oxford Middle School. Decreasing, looking at teasing out more data and more information in some of these target areas that showed the numbers higher than we'd like to see. Decreasing students riding a car by someone who has been drinking alcohol. Again, does that mean that a student went to dinner with the family, and a parent had one glass of wine, and that's how they're reporting it? We don't know. So it's just an area to raise education with the students and with parents and families, and to just get a little bit more information and clarification about how that data was reported on the survey. Decreased suicide attempts with an attention to cutting, which is something that we did add a question about on the survey. The bullying and harassment rate with attention to verbal violence among girls was reported as higher in the student population. The girls reported seeing and hearing violence among girls at a higher rate than had been previously thought that it was. Increased communication to students about all the consequences of marijuana and other illegal substance use, which really comes into play now with the passing of question two on the ballot in Massachusetts. Further investigate circumstances of school vandalism. Promoting the positive benefits of civic and social involvement, which I think we can see as a result of the tour, how the positive things are really promoted in this school is fantastic. And celebrate the successes through social norms campaigns. And I'll just speak a little bit about social norming. Social norming is letting people know what the actual norm is in the population. So for example, people might think that the norm is for, especially at the high school level, people might think that the norm is for students to party on the weekend. They would say, if you asked a student, they'd say 80% of the students, if I had to pick a statistic, 80% of the students party on the weekend, when in reality, when you do a survey and you see as a result of this survey, the majority of students are not. So a social norming campaign lets the student population, most of us don't do this. Most of us are not drinking, most of us are not smoking, most of us are not engaging in physical fighting. So social norming really just puts that positive message out there and lets the student know, students know that as a result of this survey, and they're reporting, they know that it's each other, that they really aren't, most of them really aren't doing that. And that kind of lets the students know, kind of debunks any myths that are out there or any beliefs from, you know, the one person that tells a story, and then suddenly spirals, and everyone thinks that everyone's doing something when in reality it's not. So social norming can be really successful in school, and it can do a lot to boost student confidence in knowing that their behavior that they're doing really isn't in isolation. It really is the majority of the population when they're engaging in positive things. And that is it. I do have a handout, which I will give you, which looks at next, possible next steps as a result of the survey. And there are so many different things that you can do, from different ways of sharing the data, and this is one way of sharing the data, just to get people aware and really talking about risk behaviors for the youth and what's going on in the community and the school. And different, implementing different curriculum to address specific target areas. I know that Lynn, there already, she's informed me of the things that are already going on in the school and the district, from Project Alert in grade six and seven, Second Step in grades K through eight. So there are already a lot of great things going on. I know we spoke, and she's talked to the district attorney's office, who does a lot of fantastic programming, free of charge. They'll come out, talk to parents, they'll talk to students, they'll talk to faculty, and they do everything from bullying, cyberbullying and harassment, to social host liability presentations, alcohol and other drugs. They do a lot of great programs for free. Family education night, parent awareness nights, and of course, looking towards implementing the survey again, because every, typically surveys are implemented biannually, and this allows you to get trend data. So it can tell you and actually show you that whatever programs you have implemented and are implementing are working or not working. So, and it shows you over time. There are a lot of schools that have been implementing tobacco prevention programming and inhalant use, if that was the thing, and then something else comes up down the, you know, two years down the road, and your inhalant and tobacco use rates are really low because you've implemented this fantastic program, but now there's something else that's an issue. So implementing the survey really is a positive thing for schools and districts to engage in. It allows you to show trend data, and it also brings data to the forefront of what you're doing as a school and a district, so that it opens the doors for a lot of other potential grant funding for you, because you're able to show data and show numbers to support whatever it is that you might be applying for, whether it's, it doesn't matter what it is. It could be computers for your classroom, because as a result of your survey, it shows that, you know, kids don't have time to use, kids at home don't have Internet access, so you're able to get a grant to get more Internet access, computers at school to help the students. So it really is a positive thing. So I'll hand these out.
Amanda, first of all, I'd like to thank you. That was, it was very enlightening to me to see the different statistics. Some of that I probably wouldn't have guessed at. So thank you for your part in that. And to address Lynn, if I could, now how are we actually as a district reacting to some of the opportunities that we saw tonight? I mean, Amanda touched on a few different programs that you've got going, which I'd love you to just touch on maybe briefly, to let the town know that we are reacting to what you've seen on these surveys, and what you see in the future that we need to do to accomplish some of these decreases that we all would love to see happen.
Well, the program that I'm most familiar with is the Second Step program, which is a violence prevention program that we've been using at Clara Barton School this is our fifth year. And since becoming the Safe and Drug Free Program Coordinator, I've made efforts through communicating with administrators and adjustment counselors to make sure that the Second Step program is being taught with integrity, the way it's intended to be taught in both elementary schools and in the middle school. And we've put steps in place to hold staff members accountable and to be able to document that the classes are being taught through all grade levels and that the classes are being taught consistently. The Growing Healthy program, which is a general health curriculum, has been in place in both elementary schools for years now, I'm not sure how many years. But what we were able to do with grant money from last year's grant was to purchase additional kits, so now that every grade level has its own kit, so that all grade levels in elementary school are now being able to use that Growing Healthy curriculum. Another program that goes along with Second Step is Steps to Respect, which is an anti-bullying program. And that is used, I would, I guess I would say not on a regular basis. I know that Linda Forte, the adjustment counselor at Shafie School, used that with her fourth grade students last year, and it was based on her discretion, that she felt that the fourth grade students, the Steps to Respect program is maybe a little bit more sophisticated than the Second Step program, and she felt that that particular population of fourth grade students would better respond to the Steps to Respect program versus the Second Step program. We also use some of the Safe and Drug Free grant money from last year's grant to purchase a drug and alcohol prevention program for the middle school, and that is Project Alert. And that is a program that's implemented in grade six with 11 lessons. And then there are three booster lessons that you follow up with in 7th grade. I was trained with that program, purchased the program, and what comes along with that is online training. And we had that online training as a group on our last professional development day, and I participated in that. The two adjustment counselors from Oxford Middle School participated in that. And our school resource officer, Officer Grinett, participated in that. And our safety officer, Officer Picard, participated in that. And that program was implemented, I think, just last week. It was the first time that lessons were, are being taught. And the way that's being done is that they're being co-tied by either Officer Picard or Officer Grinett, along with the physical education teachers. They also participate in the training. So all 6th grade classes will get all 11 lessons this year, and they, that will be followed up next year in 7th grade with three booster lessons.
So how do you feel? So, how do you feel? Do you feel the effectiveness of what we're doing presently? What support do you need from the school committee to get some of these other numbers in line with where we should be? I mean, there were some great, great numbers in the beginning, and I was all excited, and I was putting my little pom-poms out, I was like, "Good to go." But the second page, I mean, there were some things on there that we need to work on. How effective do you think our current programs are towards deterring some of the things that we saw? And do you -- what do you think? And I don't want to put you on the spot, so if this is something you need to think about, please do. But what do you think we need to do this year, next year, in two years, so that we are directly focusing on the issues that really surfaced during that?